Good evening, everyone, and thank you for zooming in with us this evening on our virtual town hall. I'm joined by Supervisor James Gore and a number of folks that can help answer the questions. When we started planning this town hall a number of weeks ago, over a month ago, little did we know that we would have practical demonstrations of power shut offs this weekend. So if you're like me, you've been experiencing the joys of the rotating power shutdowns and beautiful eastern weather with great thunderstorms, lightning shows, and a lot of humidity. So let's get down to it. A lot of good information is here, and I'd like to welcome Joe Horack, the North Bay and Sonoma Division Senior Manager for Pacific Gas and Electric, Chris Godley, Sonoma County Director of Emergency Management, Angie Sanchez, Head of Programs, Corazon Hillsburg, and Maite Aturi, Chair of the Springs Municipal Advisory Council and Principal of El Verano Elementary School. And Supervisor Gore is going to translate that a little bit.
Thank you, Susan. Muchas gracias, Susan, mi colega de la junta de supervisores, y gracias Angie también para estar aquí con nosotros. Para todos que hablan español y quieren la traducción de este video o este programa, hay que marcar en su... Hay un botón que dice más en Zoom, y puedes seleccionar Language Interpretation. Se puede verlo en inglés si dice Language Interpretation en español, Interpretación del lenguaje. Y a todos ustedes es un placer estar aquí con toda la familia del condado. Ya tenemos varios personas en cargo de los asuntos de preparación de la comunidad para prepararnos no solo para los incendios y otras cosas, pero en este asunto estamos dirigidos directamente al impacto de la electrificación y la luz y como en estos años donde vivimos cuando llegan los vientos altos y es nuestra utilidad que necesita apagar la luz de vez en cuando. Es un poco diferente de lo que está pasando ahora. Ahora estamos recibiendo problemas con el apagamiento de la luz y la electrificación por si acaso porque hay mucha necesidad para energía, para aire acondicionado y otras cosas. Y hay más demanda que oferta en ese sentido. Pero al otro lado, cuando vienen los vientos grandes que tenemos usualmente durante el atún, no solamente en agosto, pero el fin de septiembre, octubre, noviembre, eso es cuando tenemos los vientos diablos. Y los vientos diablos vienen fuerte y nos pegaron fuerte dos años en estos tres que ya pasamos con incendios grandes. Entonces gracias por estar aquí con nosotros, and it's a pleasure to have you all here with us. Angie, if I missed anything and you might want to jump in, please feel free to do so. Thanks.
Gracias, mi amigo. I do speak a couple of words of Spanish. So let's get down to the questions. And Supervisor Gore and I will alternate between asking the questions. Let me just start off with PG&E. Joe, you've provided great information for us over a number of years. We're so glad to have you with us today. So let's get right down to it. How long will these planned shut offs continue? Are we going to experience the shut offs for years?
Well, first off, thank you Supervisor Gore, and thank you Supervisor Gore for having us here. I wanted to also introduce a couple of folks that are joining me today. And they're important to me because they'll all correct me when I'm wrong, so I really appreciate them. Matt Pinder is here. Here's our Director of Wildfire Safety Program, also Melinda Rivera, who's our local Public Affairs Representative, and Todd Durham, who is our Public Safety Specialist after many years with CAL FIRE. And so we're glad to have them here. As far as your question as to how long these will go on, you know, it's as we start looking at the wildfire, we look at the risk within California. We look at our grid as we start to continue to make safety enhancements to that grid. In the changing environment that we have here with global warming, we could see the PSPS events go on for a number of years into the future. Having said that, this year we're working on ways to make them smaller. We're looking at making them shorter, and we're trying to give people more information as we go through these events. So we did a lot of learning from last year's. We've made a lot of investments in our infrastructure, both in terms of micro grids and sectionalizing equipment that we think will really help us narrow those impacts to our customers while at the same time keeping everyone safe moving forward.
Thanks, Joe. And you may want to present more information. You might have had it ready, a short presentation. If so, please go ahead and make your presentation, and then I'll ask you a couple of questions.
I'll go ahead and do this. I will share my screen. Now we'll see if my technology works if I'm doing this. So let me see what I can do here to share my screen and see if that will work. So... And it's not going as well as I had hoped here.
We love these virtual meetings, but sometimes they prove to be challenging.
They can be challenging. And Supervisor, if you want to go to another panelist, I'll come back and I'll have this ready to go.
Great, we will do that. And Supervisor Gore, why don't you introduce Corazon Hillsburg and ask the questions of Angie?
Well, it's a pleasure to do so. You know, Angie, I would love for you to introduce yourself. And a quick moment for Corazon. I'll just start to say, and suffice to say, that Corazon Hillsburg has stepped up, always in a response mode. And Corazon Hillsburg, which serves a lot of the groups in northern Sonoma County, but at the same time is a part of a collaboration of Latino-led organizations that support all areas of our community, among those in Sonoma Valley, Undocufond, others, you know, that we've been working with, have really moved into the preparedness space. And that's where it needs to be. We know that over our disasters, we have continued to strive to be better at communicating with our various languages, especially Spanish, in Sonoma County. But at the same time, we know there's a lot more to be done. Specifically, last year with the Kincaid fires before we encountered COVID, Corazon Hillsburg raised significant funding, and we all supported you as you provided direct assistance to individuals displaced by evacuations and specifically by the fire in some cases. So just want to let you know how you're working to prepare Latinx community and low-income residents for power shut offs, and also what's the call to action to us as organizers and to the community at large.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation, having me tonight. So I am Angie Sanchez. I am Head of Programs for Corazon Hillsburg. For those of you that don't know who Corazon is, we are a nonprofit that's located in Hillsburg and that serves North County, so from Windsor to Cloverdale. And really, our mission is to bridge the racial, cultural, and economic divide that continues to exist today. Yeah, so in regards to funding, Corazon established the Unity and Community Fund that, as you mentioned Supervisor Gore, we were able to provide direct financial assistance to many of those that were affected during the 2019 Kincaid fire, whether it was direct assistance to be able to purchase basic needs like clothing, shoes, food. And then we helped many relocate or find temporary housing after they were displaced from the fires. Currently, what we are doing is we're continuing to support a lot of those families through case management. It's been, you know, it's been a few months. So there's that long-term case management that we've been able to provide, whether it's we had a lot of men who lost their housing and their employment because they lived where they worked. And during the fires, a lot of those properties burned down. So we've been helping a lot of those families or individuals with one-on-one case management, and we continue to do so. If in case there is another emergency, we still have our Unity and Community Fund. And again, case by case, we will then reopen the applications, do an intake, and really establish and assess what is the need per individual family. In regards to how we are helping prepare the families, we kicked off about a month ago our Disaster and Resiliency Program, and that encompasses different workshops. So one of them is the LISTOS, which is the Ready Program, which they teach about emergency preparedness, how to have a communication plan, what to do in case of, you know, an evacuation, how to have your emergency go back. And so that's one of the workshops that individuals need to complete, as well as a financial one-on-one literacy class that also helps them prepare in case of an emergency, or how to come out of a financial after an emergency, as well as we're providing a one-year of free renters insurance paid by Corazon for those that attend Renters Insurance 101. We know that a lot of those who lost their home in the fires didn't have renters insurance. So then when they had to evacuate, they were not able to get reimbursed for the groceries that were in the fridge. Or where they rented, it burnt down and they lost all their belongings. They didn't have the financial means to be able to go to a hotel during these evacuations. And so it's really talking about getting prepared. And we are there trying to provide all of the different resources to make sure that when the next emergency happens, the next disaster, they're LISTOS, they are ready. So and that's for anybody who, again, is in the North County, so from Windsor to Cloverdale. If anybody's interested in learning more about the program, please reach out. As we would love to be able to... Our goal is to serve 500 families in the next couple of months.
Angie, I want to thank you and clarify a couple of things. One, or enhance a couple of things. One is, as you mentioned, case management. That really means working hand in glove with somebody, you know, intake, and then understanding that if you need to support people, is it help with bills? Is it help with rental assistance for a short amount of time? The importance of that, and I want to call that out for everybody in this community, is that, you know, we have a lot of people in this community that are on the edge of homelessness, couch surfing. We did a study after the 2017 fires that showed that we had about, you know, quite a few thousand people who had dropped into homelessness, and we had more than double that that were close. It's extremely expensive to live here. It's very difficult to purchase here. And so the whole goal of all of our programs are to make sure that we give people a chance to survive not just the direct disaster, but the ripples of that disaster, as in losing your ability to earn money, losing the food in your refrigerator, having to pay your bills even though you can't earn and work, and you've been displaced, maybe you have to get a hotel room, all these other added expenses. It's actually more expensive for somebody during a disaster to try and stay safe than not. And so I want to thank you for that. So anybody who's interested, you can just look up Corazon Hillsburg on a Google search. Please engage. And, you know, the only other thing I will say is, para nuestra comunidad que habla español, es hay que levantar su voz. Angie, as you and I talk about all the time, if you're in our Latino community, the one thing we ask is you raise your voice because partners like us can't directly help if we don't know what's going on. There's a lot of fear in our community sometimes, but those are the times we need to hear from folks. Anything you want to add to that, Angie, before we pass it on?
No, I mean, I think that's exactly... We want the community to know that they can trust Corazon Hillsburg. If they can come to us for anything that they might need. And in regards to, I think earlier you asked if there was anything that we as a community, as an organization, asked of you all is... One of the things we discussed this morning at our staff meeting after the shut offs and outages this weekend was that there needs to be better communication plans in regards to having language access to the Spanish-speaking community. And there needs to be a plan so if these shut offs do happen, that they have an on-call translator at all times. There's a lot of information that was posted over the weekend, but it was not available in Spanish. And so Corazon was, of course, more than happy to step in and help do the translation. But I think this is not something that's just going to be a one-time thing. It's going to be an ongoing occurrence of always having some sort of an emergency or disaster. Like, we need to be prepared, and we need to have a communication plan.
Thank you, Angie, so much. Maite Aturi, Principal of El Verano School and Chair of the Springs Municipal Advisory Council. You've been at the center of so many disasters, starting with the 2017 fires, certainly. The smoke from Butte County, shutdown after shutdown after shutdown of the power to the Springs area. And thank you, first of all, for your service. We've been working with you on community preparedness and directions forward. Why don't you give us a sense of how the Springs area has fared, especially during the 2017 fires? You experienced similar kind of things to Corazon Hillsburg, where we recognized how vulnerable we were, our community desperately in need of housing, for sure. But moving forward, what do we need? And especially you as principal, how do you work with families in the Springs area? You're muted. You have to unmute.
Always. Never. Always think I'm ready.
And then you have to speak up. We did a sound check, but we can't hear you, so you're going to have to speak up.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
A little better. Increase the volume if you can.
I cannot. It's as high as it'll go. Okay.
Okay.
I'll speak really loudly. How's that? Is that better?
Yes, better. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you for including me in this really important conversation and for creating the space to have this conversation. Me llamo Maite, soy la directora de la escuela verano, y también soy la presidenta of Springs Municipal Advisory Council. Estoy muy contente de estar aquí con ustedes esta noche. So your questions are about the MAC and then also working with children in the valley. So a couple of points. In 2017, when we were all caught off guard and very unprepared, our community in the Springs was very vulnerable. Great, amazing assets in this community, but the information was slow in coming. And we all know that we've gotten better at getting it out in Spanish language, but that was a big void in the 2017. In addition to that, we had a big void of resources here in the Springs. And I think we are all working to make that better. I can speak to what some of the work that the MAC is doing. Currently, we are really focusing on emergency preparedness, not only for fires, but also earthquakes. And as we all know, we may have a PSPS. Some people are in the middle of a power shutdown now, and others may be in the near future. So we are working on a couple of different options to prepare our community. We're looking at Fire Safe Council option to kind of have the structure around our community to be able to have the training and the support that we need to be able to make sure that our community is well taken care of. We are also participating in LISTOS, and some of us are getting certified. One of the other components, it's very much a grassroots initiative. It is working on block captains for our areas to make sure that our blocks and our neighborhoods have people who are designated to ensure that there's that communication happening and that building of communication and relationships are happening within that block so people understand what the needs are within that community and within that specific area. To check on your neighbors, really, that's what we're trying to get people to do, is know who your neighbors are and what their needs might be. Are there elders in the home? Do people need assistance if there was an evacuation? So just to really kind of have a better understanding, we are very isolated right now, not only because of... We're isolated, and COVID compounding that has even made us even more isolated. So checking on your neighbors from a safe distance is really important, but being able to have that relationship with those folks. As I mentioned, we have amazing assets within our community, but it's that organization and structure that needs to be put in place so that we can capitalize on those efforts. So we'll be bringing something forward to the MAC in the next couple of meetings for us to actually begin to... We've been in the planning phase, and we are working towards implementation. Slow, little steps, but we are working towards making sure that our community is prepared for whatever that next emergency might be. In relationship to working with students in the schools and in relationship to power shutdowns, I have a couple of suggestions to parents. We're in distance learning right now, and when our power gets shut down, school will be a challenge to continue with. So make sure that your Chromebook is charged because you can still access your Google Classroom and the assignments on there, even if your power is shut down, if your computer's charged. If you have power, you can get to the apps. Know that your teacher may not have power. So we're not sure what that will look like, and we will be sure to communicate with you about that. Also, make sure that they've got some books and some papers so that they can read and they can write, and they're not totally dependent on the electricity and the computer. But there are some things that you can do when your computer's charged and even if you don't have Wi-Fi access. And we just encourage you to have water and snacks and those kinds of things ready for your kids in the event of a power shutdown, and we are not in a regular school setting. So those are just a couple of the tips that I have to make sure that kids are still learning and staying safe. And just to know that it's important to create that community. And as Supervisor Gore was mentioning about raising the voice of the Latinx community, I think it's really important that we create the space for those voices to be raised too, so that we have that space and we are listening. So thank you again for the opportunity.
And thank you. And you are helping to create the space for all of the members of our community to speak out about their needs. Joe, can we go back to you at PG&E? Because hopefully, your presentation is ready. And then I hope you can help us understand what we're experiencing now, the grid challenges, the power loads versus the red flag events that we actually were preparing for, for the power shutdowns. And it looks like you're still challenged. You're having your technical expertise come in there and help you out.
You're going to have to drop off of the call and then... Okay, well, I tell you what. I'm going to verbally walk you through what we were going to talk about here because...
Good.
Let me talk about a couple of things really quickly, and I appreciate everybody here, and I appreciate you having us on. You know, what I want to tell everybody is we know everyone is currently focused on staying, you know, safe here in the COVID environment. And we appreciate everybody's patience as we go through this, as we go through PSPS, as we go through planned outages, mention of schools and planned outages. We know this is sometimes a difficult time to go through with that, but we really appreciate everybody going and helping us out and understanding as we're upgrading the system and having planned outages. What I'd like to talk about is, and most people know of Sonoma County, so I'm going to verbally describe, we are in a lot of Tier 2 and Tier 3 environment. Tier 3 is the highest risk. We see that out on the river. We see it out in West County. We also see the Tier 3 out along the ridges of Sonoma County to the east. And then a lot of Tier 2 that's blended in there. A lot of our Tier 1s are coming in from the city of Santa Rosa. And those are the tiers that... The Tier 1 that does not have a lot of fire threat to it. But as most people know, Sonoma County has had multiple shut offs in the last year with that. You know, what is a shut off? You know, it's high winds. It's a lot of different factors that come into play that we shut the power off in order to make sure that the customers are safe. The power and the infrastructure is not creating any kind of fire, any kind of light to that fire. So we look at the electrical lines and go through those high-risk areas. We say, how can we begin to look at ways to mitigate that? So what kind of weather leads to that PSPS? You know, we look at low humidities. We look at high winds. We look at, you know, dry material. Obviously, red flag warnings come into it, and then real ground observations that we have. You know, we look at ways in which we... People on the ground taking a look, what's the conditions, what we're doing, things like that. And we think is really important for us to get that on-the-ground look at. We also, when we start looking at PSPS, we look at, you know, what was the history of the weather going through here? We went back and looked like 30 years and took billions of data points, and we said, well, what do these things mean? What are all of this information out there? You know, we found that, you know, on average, we should be having, you know, one to three events every year that started looking at this. So we're starting to use that information to begin to plan ahead. We also are investing in a lot of weather stations out there. By the end of 2021, we're hoping to have a weather station at... Per weather station for every 20 miles of our lines. So it gives us really intimate look at our weather. It gives us really intimate look at our conditions, and that's going to help us be more focused in when we put in a PSPS as we're moving forward. A couple of quick things that we're doing this year. It sounds a little bit like a marketing program, but we're trying to make things, in a sense, smaller. We're looking at shorter, and we're looking at smarter. So when I say smaller, we've invested this year. This year, we've put in, and our scheduler put in, about 53 sectionalizing devices. Now, when you look at sectionalizing devices, that helps us manage the grid in order to, if you're in a Tier 1 and the line then goes into a Tier 2, we're putting a sectionalizer at the edge of Tier 1 so we can keep on that Tier 1 while we may have to take the power out of the Tier 2. So that's making it a lot... Making them a lot smaller in that way. So we've invested. We had 31 we put in in Sonoma County last year. We're putting another 53 in this year. So again, we're shrinking them down. We're making sure that when we're putting these PSPSs, we're really going into areas that are really in need, and we can really look at our system that way. We've invested. One of the things to make them shorter, we want to make our... We want to restore within 12 daylight hours after the severe weather has gone. We want to make sure that as fast as we can, we can get out there after the severe weather has gone to look at things, to make sure that there is any damage to the lines or those lines are clear. We've invested a lot. We've doubled our helicopter fleet to almost 60. We've invested in infrared technology. So in the past, we may have been only able to do inspections at night. We're able to do inspections during the day. Over the last month, a lot of folks in Sonoma County had called me and said, hey, what are all these helicopters doing over our land and buzzing around? We've been doing mapping of our distribution lines, where we can fly them. And in some cases, we have beautiful tree-lined areas where Sonoma County is, and there's places we're going to have to walk to inspect the lines. So we want to know exactly where that is so we can, once weather is cleared, we can be very, very good about where we can go, where we can see, and getting people back on as fast as we can. We also are looking at how we're doing it smarter. Obviously, last year, we learned from a lot of our internet and our communication last year that we had some work to do, and I think we accomplished it this year. We've got a lot more information going out. We've got a lot of better backbone within our internet to really give people a lot of information and to have them coming from us to get us the information. Not just, you know, am I going to be out? But how are we going to prepare? What should they do? What are some of the things that they should take into consideration as they prepare for a PSPS? So we think through those... So we think through those elements, uh, we're starting to really get to some, uh, to, to start to hone our game a little bit. And, and, you know, we always are going through practicing, knowing things, the community, uh, the voices we hear from the community, those are important for us to take into consideration as we start looking at these programs to say, are we doing it correctly? What are we impacting? How are we doing that? This year is a curve ball. Last year, we didn't have the COVID-19. This year, we have COVID-19. We have more, um, not as concerned necessarily about a school site, but maybe the neighborhood around the school because kids are, are, are at home learning and, and kids are at home doing home study and distant learning. That's something we have to continue to take into consideration to make sure that we're reflecting these PSPS events on local. But at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that our system is safe for our customers and we're doing the things necessary to get that done. Still got a lot of work to do, still a lot of things going on that we're gonna be continuing to do, but I think we're on the right track and we, we look forward to continuing having a discussion with, um, our, our community um, and making sure that we're, we're working hand in glove with that.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, one more question for me and then Supervisor Gore has a question. And the question really is, why are we having rotating, uh, blackouts or power shutdowns now? It's not a red flag event, no high winds, I wish there were actually, uh, high heat, high humidity, incredible load, apparently. Why are we, why haven't we been able to work on the grid, the power grid?
I think one, one of the things we go back to and, and, you know, the blackouts and why now? And I wanted to tip a hat to Chris Godley, who, uh, was eloquent in, in chatting back and forth on that, you know? And I'll quote him, so Chris, if I get your quote wrong, please, uh, please tell me. Um, you know, there's no, there's no single answer, you know? Right now, the California ISO, which can, which manages the grid and directs on the grid, has, has said, there's an imbalance between what we're using and what we're generating. Um, and having that, uh, grid imbalance would, and, and having it in balance and collapse would be, would be catastrophic. So the Cal ISO, um, calls these, uh, rolling blackouts, we haven't had them for 10 years before my time at PG&E, um, but they've had them for the last, uh, they haven't had them for 10 years. Um, and as we're moving forward, i- it's that imbalance between supply and demand on the grid. Um, and the Cal ISO really, uh, really controls that, not, not the, the utilities.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Gore?
Uh, Joe, I wanna, I wanna thank you for the overview, especially kind of the details on the, uh, on the sectionalize, sectionalizing and the mapping and other things like that. One of the things that's, uh, we've heard and gotten updates is a plan by PG&E to connect, uh, generators, large scale generators to substations to, uh, to keep, uh, high population areas on the grid, uh, through alternative, uh, production, uh, if need be, um, i.e. natural gas, other kinds of propane, whatever you're gonna run through them. Uh, can you give any update on that and how that affects the whole system?
And thank you very much, and, and I may rely on Matt Penderdade to help me out a little bit on this. You know, one of the things we looked at last year was when we, um, and, and last year, the Kincaid fire and the transmission issues that, uh, were associated with the Kincaid fire. We had a lot of areas that, um, may not have been, may not have been in a fire risk area, but because that substation came offline, because this, you know, the, the transmission feeds the substation, the substation then feeds, uh, the, the, the feeders or the circuits coming out of that substation. So this year, we were very deliberate in looking around and saying, as we're, if we can look at a transmission situation like that, are there ways in which we could put a series of generators within a, um, uh, in, in a substation so that we can keep the circuits of that substation up? So we've been looking at that and we've identified substations around Sonoma County, uh, at Windsor and out of Malino, Salmon Creek, in which we found that those areas could benefit, uh, if we were able to, uh, put, uh, generators within those substations and, and make sure that we can keep those folks that may not be impacted by a distribution, uh, PSPS event, but maybe are impacted by a transmission PSPS event, and that would be our solution. Matt, do you, anything that I'm missing there that, uh, I need to add?
No, uh, thanks, Joe, for, um, the opportunity. Uh, you, you nailed it, right? So the population that we're really looking to keep in power in these situations are the folks who are in safe to energize areas. They're in tier one or they're not experiencing the wind and the dangerous conditions that other customers may be experiencing. And so we've got a couple of different tools to help us keep the events as small as possible. One, we just described was that substation generation set. Another is the sectionalizing devices, so we can cut the grid into smaller bits to keep the hazardous areas separated from the safer areas and keep the power on in those safer areas. So a lot of tools like that we're implementing this year and Joe outlined it pretty well.
I will, I will say one other thing for the educators, uh, here, and I'm a, I'm a, a president of a, of a school board, that, uh, the rotating outages, uh, were purposely didn't happen during the school day. So we can, uh, thank the governor and Al ISO for, uh, doing that as well, so.
Joe, one other, one other thing on the tail end of that is last year, PG&E, uh, propped up community resource centers called CRCs, uh, areas where folks could go to charge their phones if there was a prolonged outage and other things like that. Uh, same plans this year to identify, uh, and update the community?
We have, uh, we've been working with, uh, Chris and his team, but also with the communities to establish, uh, community resource centers. Uh, last year, we had several of them, uh, in the county that provided, um, you know, a place to get water, uh, charge your, uh, phone to get information. And so we're gonna continue to do that this year. Uh, one of the challenges we have and we wanna be able to work in cooperation with, um, uh, you know, the county and the state is we wanna make sure that if we're setting those up, those are in, uh, compliance and, and in collaboration with whatever COVID-19 issues we have. So we're gonna have to be a little bit flexible on what those CRCs are gonna look like, uh, whether, whether that's a drive through CRC, whether that's picking up information, how we're doing that. But we're definitely going to have a presence, a community resource presence if we're gonna be doing a, a, a PSPS in Sonoma County. And we've identified five or six locations that we think will good, both inter, inside, uh, locations, inside of, uh, uh, areas. And then also, we're planning for ones that we can do outside that may have, uh, that may be able to, uh, be with the strictures of, um, COVID-19 and, and keeping people, uh, safe from, from that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan, do you want me to go ahead and introduce, uh, Chris?
Uh, can I, uh, and I just wanted to say thank you to Joe for, uh, the resource centers set up, um, in the Sonoma Valley. You've already arranged for the, uh, Hannah Boy Center to be open once again. And I know that's something that Maite and I have worked on. Can we find a resource center that the population could walk to, such as El Verano Altamira School? So we're, we would love to work with you on that possibility. And also to thank Chris for setting up the cooling centers in Cloverdale and Sonoma Valley at the Veterans Building. And so, uh, James, go ahead and introduce Chris and then we'll, uh, encourage him to give us a presentation about what's going on.
Well, I appreciate that and I think, uh, before I do that, we have quite a few questions that have come in on also, on the Q and A and then also on the chat. So since we're tracking towards, uh, we're at a good timeframe here, I think we'll let Chris go. And then, uh, Supervisor Gore, maybe what we can do is take those questions and make sure we direct them to the right individuals because, uh, there's ones for PG&E, ones for emergency services about texts and other things. So, um, without further ado,
Exactly.
Uh, Chris Godley, uh, thanks for joining us. You're the, uh, the department head, the director of, uh, the Department of Emergency Services for us here in Sonoma County. Uh, big part of your job is not only running the emergency ops center and all of our preparedness activities, but it is, uh, making sure that our emergency management operates as a partnership nexus as opposed to a bunker. Um, would love for you to share some thoughts about, uh, um, where we're at, uh, with respect to, um, upcoming, uh, public safety power shutdowns and how the county and our emergency services partners are going to supplement. Uh, those are things like alert, uh, helping people identify places to go. And what is really our role in supporting, uh, our utility, uh, local utility partner PG&E on, uh, managing this process? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Um, basically, I'm the county's paranoid guy. My job is to worry about what could go wrong and some plans in place that we can respond appropriately if they do in fact occur. And certainly that was the case last year with 2019. Uh, we jumped on power shut offs and lo and behold, it did actually roll out. Let me share a brief slide deck with you real quickly and then, but I do wanna make sure we leave enough time for everybody to really address those questions that are coming in, given the topical nature of the discussion. Uh, first, uh, in terms of planning, we did have a plan as of last year to deal with power shut offs. Basically, it's kinda like our version of a plan that we might write for, say, an earthquake or a flood. We saw public power safety shut offs as being a significant life safety threat. And so we wanted to make sure that we could operate in a degraded environment and still meet the needs that.
Hey, Chris, um, this is Susan. Are you sharing slides? Because if so, they're not being shared.
Oh, okay. My apologies. It indicates that they are being shared, but I'll just get off the slides and, uh.
But I see Naomi really well.
See the slides.
These are good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, so we have a plan. It worked out well last year when the Kincaid fire rolled out, we were not caught short. We could still respond to a fire event even though we were dealing with power shut offs. So, uh, we're very pleased with how well the, the plan performed last year. Uh, taking it forward, I'll just highlight that when PG looks at shutting off the power, we respond, uh, in phases, if you would, basically steps, chapters in a book, if you would, a story about how we're gonna respond to these events. The first is get ready. Make sure that our stakeholders, cities, special districts, public safety agencies like Fire, Law Enforcement, Public Works, that everyone understands what could happen when PG looks to de-energize circuits. What would the impacts be, say, for hospitals or for supermarkets? Really getting everyone kind of together in the room well beforehand and ensuring that not only do we know each other, but we have a common understanding of how the process would occur and how we can communicate during an event. And so, once we get a warning from PG&E, we might have maybe 48 hours to really fine tune our preparedness efforts, to make sure that everyone's online, that they're all leaning forward, um, that they're doing things like filling up gas day, or fuel tanks in the, in the squad cars and double checking batteries and radios, unplugging, uh, sensitive electrical equipment. And that gives us a real chance to engage also with the community. So we have an enhanced public education information outreach that occurs simultaneously, especially with our socoemergency.org website, which I'll bring up in just a moment. So basically, it's a real good chance to fine tune and make sure we've got everything ready to go. Uh, this is kind of a bureaucratic flow chart. I just felt I had to share with folks that this is kind of a, a visual representation of how we would connect with several hundred stakeholder agencies within a short period of time to make sure they were notified about a potential power shut off. Uh, this takes quite a bit of effort and there are a number of players here and a lot of information moving around. And that's why it's sometimes challenging to make sure that everybody gets all the exact and most up to date information. Uh, we often will get a very near term notice from PG&E saying, yes, we've considered the conditions and they're sufficiently dangerous that we are in fact going to turn off the power. That might actually give us about an hour so that we can reach out to the community again and saying, it's no longer hypothetical, it's coming your way. And be aware that once the power goes out, our chances of warning you using our warning systems like, uh, the alert warning system that's on your phone called the wireless emergency alert, those systems can begin to fail. And so if a fire does start, for example, we might be challenged in reaching you when the power does go out. And then finally, uh, we ramp up our efforts again during the outage. We'll have additional staff working to manage the event, do public information, but also enhance public safety for law enforcement, public works, fire. Uh, it's a big push, if you would, during these dark days and dark evenings. And then finally, we go into restoration. When PG&E begins to restore the power, we'll begin to wind down, if you would, uh, uh, do a, a check to see what the damages are and really help identify where in the community there are still additional challenges. So that's kind of how we approach it. What we're suggesting for folks, much as was talked about earlier, especially the Windsor's, um, experiences, we want everyone to get ready. And so to that end, we have quite a bit of information available on our socoemergency.org website. Um, it's important to make sure PG knows who you are. You might wanna update your contact information so you can get those notifications. Uh, we wanna make sure you've got a chance and maybe you have a backup charging device for a phone. You might wanna consider alternate power sources. Generators are popular, but it's important to buy the appropriate technology, whether it's a generator or a battery. Uh, we wanna make sure you fill up your gas tanks. It's hard to run around town when the gas stations are closed. Uh, have some cash on hand because oftentimes retail stores and those electronic points of sale may not be functioning, but they'll still sell you a bottle of water if you got cash. And then finally, it's a good chance to sit down and review your update, your emergency kit. Make sure you've got supplies that you might need to weather the storm, as it were, in this case, the electrical outage storm. But finally, and more appropriate for this evening, as the state is literally as I speak, beginning to initiate rotating, uh, power shut offs, um, use your cell phone sparingly. Uh, don't just call friends, check and just gab away the night. You literally wanna maintain that battery unless you've got an alternate source of power. It's important to note that most of these outages occur during high heat and dryness, so it's important to stay hydrated. Uh, don't forget to do that because that will really be a challenge to catch up later. And then keep your refrigerator doors closed. Don't keep checking to see if everything's still cold. As much as possible, keep those doors closed because even within four hours, some food products will need to be discarded if the power doesn't come back on. If you have a generator, it's important to be safe, uh, making sure you don't bring it inside, that it's vented properly, especially for refueling, uh, turning it off, making sure it cools before trying to put more gas into it. And as more importantly, as was talked about earlier, check on your neighbors and, and friends, like in the hot springs. Really see, are there people that may not be doing well? Are there folks that might be struggling with issues? It's a good chance to reach out to your neighbors and friends and just say hi, just see how it was going, how, how was your experience? If you need anything, it's a great chance to connect with people, again, socially distanced right now. So those are our tips, uh, for preparing as well as what to do with the power out. And certainly, I just wanna leave room for any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I think James and I will probably alternate the questions. I think we did talk about the cooling centers. Any other information about the cooling centers?
Uh, in addition to the two centers, the one there in Sonoma and Cloverdale, we're gonna be opening a third county center in Sebastopol tomorrow at Annalee High School. Santa Rosa has two open, Healdsburg has, uh, two of them, and Petaluma has one open as well. So, uh, we did not see a lot of foot traffic today because the clouds came in and kinda kept the temperatures lower. But tomorrow, we're really expecting to do some business as it really ramps up with heat and humidity.
Chris, one, one follow up for me and then we'll get to the questions as well, um, is everyone is asking us about, okay, let's just assume, since you are Mr. Paid to be Paranoid, and I have joined you and we have joined you in this, thank you very much for the infection. Let's assume, uh, we have fire. Let's assume, or something else. Let's also assume that during COVID, we are going to have to evacuate people and establish shelters. Not just cooling centers, not just community resource centers, but full blown shelters. Uh, talk about what is the preparedness on your side, working with, whether it's us directly in our management or Red Cross and other locations to be able to manage humanity needing a place to stay when it's, when it's also very important to keep people socially distanced?
Well, that's a big part of our efforts since about May, when we came out of the Emergency Operations Center from the initial response to COVID, we began to really conduct what we call concurrent hazard, or basically, it's two bad things happening at the same time planning. That's really our job. So in developing a lot of this, it's been a focus on this mass shelter issue. We can't just evacuate folks and put them into a big high school gymnasium. Instead, we're looking at now using a new range of shelter options, what we call non-congregate, are basically allowing people to be separated physically while they're sheltering. And in this case, we're gonna make use of, say, hotels. In partnership with the American Red Cross, uh, we'll place individuals, especially those. In partnership with the American Red Cross, we'll place individuals, especially those most vulnerable, those that may be challenged by physical mobility issues or may have underlying medical conditions. We'll try to get them into hotel rooms. We'll also be looking at other sites such as campgrounds for those that have that ability. We'll be making room there, as well as potentially dorm rooms, other opportunities that are available to us. And then finally, if the numbers are significant enough, we may open shelters again. But instead of really large numbers of people, maybe say 20 or 30 folks at a shelter site instead of 200. So in that case, what we're going to be doing is scattering people a bit further afield, putting people physically further from their homes, just because that's where the facilities are. And we'll be opening up maybe two or three times as many shelters as we might otherwise. So we're hopeful that that range of options, plus the fact that each of these locations will be doing medical screening and implementing COVID protection measures, will be sufficient to keep people safe.
Chris and Joe, and I'm not sure which one wants to answer this question, but we know we're coming into, we're already experiencing the PSPS or rotating power outages. Is there a way to let the community know where those resource centers will be? For this season, you can plan on this center being open, and these are the kind of services that you will receive. For this kind of condition, this is what you will see. It's really frustrating for folks to suddenly get an alert, a NICSIL alert or something else where it says, oh, cooling centers are popping open on these two days, or the resource center is going to open up without the advance notice. Can we actually operationalize this?
I'll defer to Joe on the CRCs, is that we partner with them on the initial selection of sites. But PGE is the one that then determines, based on the number of individuals that may be impacted, how many CRCs and in which geographic areas they may be needed.
Yeah, well, that's exactly it. You know, if we have a PSPS that's going to just be impacting, say, the Sonoma Valley, you may not need to open one up in Guernville. So we will have, when we get, as we start moving through this month, we're going to get finalized on where those CRCs are going to be. And then we'll be getting, get that information out to people so that they know that if it's an indoor site or an outdoor site, where those are going to be located, so that people can plan ahead with that. But then, as we're going through before our PSPS event occurs, there'll be additional information that's going to be coming out, so that people will know where to go, what they can expect, especially as we're dealing with COVID-19. Is that going to be inside a building, a hard building? Or is it going to be more of an outdoor type of site? That obviously takes into consideration social distancing and things of that nature, so we can keep people safe. So we'll be getting that information out to folks in Sonoma County.
Joe, this is the question I constantly pepper Chris with. Okay, we have a power shutdown. Oh, wait, our internet is down. Oh, wait, our cell phones are down. So how will people be able to get the information that they need? And someone reported that the PGE website crashed on Friday and they could not get the information. Will there be a time when we have communication systems that don't crash during a power shutdown?
I was disappointed to hear about the event, and I responded back on one of the Q and A's. And I was disappointed that that person had that experience. Our only excuse is on Friday. We got about 10 minutes of notice when they were going to be rolling blackout. So I think we're, over the last couple of days, we're really better prepared for that. When it comes to, obviously, what we plan to do with the PSPS is we're going to be starting, when possible, about two days before we're going to be having a PSPS. We're going to be sending out notifications. We want people to get signed up on PGE's website, make sure that notification is there, and so that we have the right information for you. And so, two days before, we're going to be sending out notifications. The day of, you know, we're going to get a little bit more refined, you know, this is what's going to happen, this is what we're going to do. And then we're going to be sending it out and one out to right before the event. And then, once the event happens, we're going to be looking at social media, we're going to be looking at radio, television, those sorts of things, to keep people informed about what's going on. And then, of course, we'll give you one after it's been restored. But a couple of things that this year, that we really worked on this year, is some certitude. You know, people go, when's my power going to go out? So we want to make sure that we're looking, locking into that certitude that says the power's going to go out at this time. And with, we also want to begin to estimate when our times of recovery are. So people are going, well, is it going to be six hours? Is it going to be 10 hours? Is it going to be 24 hours? You know, as that weather starts to move off and we get clearance to do those restorations, we want to be able to provide people with a good idea of what those estimated times of recovery are. To your call about cell phone towers, we've done a lot of partnering with our cell phone companies because we know when the power goes off, cell phone towers don't work. That becomes a really tough imposition for people. So we've been working with our cell phone providers around the state. They've also been working with the state too, to begin to develop ways that will extend the lives of those cell phone towers, so that when our power goes off, they have the capability of staying on longer. And of course, we continue to update them and we'll continue to work hand in glove with them, so they know when we're going to be instituting a PSPS.
Supervisor Gore. You're muted.
Thank you, Supervisor Gore. Couple other questions. Joe, I know you answered some of them online, and there's a couple others. But one of them was, could a drive-by community resource center include a portable charger exchange? So people don't sit there and congregate, but they have the ability to get charging and drop something off.
We're, Supervisor Gore, we're investigating all of those because that's one thing, when people come by and they say they couldn't charge their battery, or their phone, their laptops, things like that, that we know are important to communicate, not only with loved ones out of the area, but to get more information. That's something that we're definitely exploring to make sure that we can fit that into the offerings we have.
I have another question here from Will Abrams that has quite a few questions. It's really related to how the PGE Community Resource Centers are going to be. First of all, is there a list of where they're going to be located? So I'll start with, I'll do a couple of quick hits. I'll ask this in four parts to you. So first, is there an existing list that people can get access to, or is that going to be provided later?
We're finalizing where those are going to be. We were, as we're working with Chris's team to get those identified, one of the things that hit us with a curve ball is COVID-19. We think we're sailing right along, and then we have to come up with some backup plans and that. But we're working really closely with Chris and Nancy to come up with, to finalize that list of those going forward.
Well, and along that, there are some discussions about supporting people with disabilities at those areas. There are COVID, the question about will COVID protocols be at these centers and will they be well managed? I think that's a big part of it. I mean, we can talk about what should have happened or what could have happened. But the question is, is really what's going to happen? Are you guys, the community resource centers were kind of, I kind of pop-ups that people could kind of self-manage, right? In a good way. So what are you thinking in terms of staffing to be able to manage the issues with COVID and other stuff?
We're going to have to. And one of the things that, I had a really elaborate slide about that, Supervisor Gore, and now I don't. But I think one of the things we're going to have to do is we start looking at our presence within those CRCs is making sure that they conform with both the county and with the state guidance with regard to COVID-19. So we're going to have to take that into consideration, both for staffing, what's available, whether they're indoor, whether they're outdoor, whether things between now and October or even late September, as we've got into last year, whether things change for better or more restricted. We're going to have to adapt to that, to make sure what we're doing is not only giving those people information, but we're also providing them with an environment that does not, that conforms with a safe location for people to go to, that they are not going to be subjected to a risk of getting COVID. I would also mention that we do have a partnership, you know, with our, we want to make sure people understand they can get on our medical baseline too as well. And we do have a partnership with various CBOs within Sonoma County to get people battery backups and to get hotel rooms, transportation, things of that nature. So we think we'll be in pretty good, we're hoping to be able to supply that to folks. Matt Pinter, do you have anything to add to that, sir?
You covered a lot of it, so I'll just emphasize the COVID aspect of it, which is that we have clear protocols in place for these centers, these community resource centers. We'll be metering people to make sure we don't get too many people inside if they are indoor centers. We'll be doing temperature checks, face masks or facial coverings will be required. The outdoor sites will be grab and go, so we'll be, you know, providing resources to people as they drive by or walk by. And only folks who need, you know, to recharge medical equipment or things like that will be staying for a period of time to charge their equipment. So we're definitely taking the COVID controls and mitigation seriously. We have disinfectant and cleaning protocols in place, all that kind of stuff. So another part of your question there was about, can people know where these locations are going to be in advance? And that's tricky. We've talked with a number of experts about this. And one of the challenges, Joe made this, provided this example earlier, if the outage is only in one place, we don't want people heading to a CRC in a different place that isn't relevant and thinking that that one will be activated. And so it's in the lead-up to the event, like the two days before each event, that we'll make it clear where the CRCs are going to be, because it's going to be dependent on where that event is. We have hundreds of locations across our service territory, you know, beyond Sonoma County, that we've identified as possible locations, but we're only going to activate the ones that are necessary and relevant for each event. So it's really important for people to have thought in advance, if, hey, if a PSPS event comes my way, what am I going to do, right? Am I comfortable to shelter here? Do I have some kind of battery backup or power backup of my own? Or do I need to go get resources somewhere else? And then when you get that notification, let's say, two days in advance, it's not the first time you've ever thought about it. So that's really what's important, you know, for all of us to plan and prepare, because a power outage can come at any time with much less than two hours' notice, as we're experiencing during these CAL ISO rotating outages. And so we want people to have thought about it and pre-planned as much as it makes sense for them.
Thanks, Matt and Joe. I want to ask a forward-leaning question. Obviously, thank you for setting up the CRCs, but that's not good enough for the resilience. And you've been working on the grid systems. We hope to get to a place where we will never have power outages, or if we do, all of us will have battery backup systems. And Joe, I know you've been working with the senior community of Oakmont in the Resiliency Project, 10-year project to put in the solar panels and eventually have battery backup. Is this the wave of the future? Should all of us be looking at solar panels and battery backups in our homes in those emergency centers and the places of refuge?
You know, I think that's a decision by each customer to be able to make that decision. You know, they may decide that a generator is more appropriate for them. They may decide that solar panel and a battery backup certainly has a lot of folks thinking about what they're wanting to do when they're going to, how they're going to manage outages. And so we encourage everybody to be very self-reliant in the sense of going out and finding that information, what fits for you. The technology is coming around where maybe five years ago, batteries may not have been the appropriate way. But now, as we're seeing all of the, we're seeing a lot more in the market, and we continue to see more in the market. And that may help us, in a lot of ways, Supervisor Gore, may help us manage some of our more high-risk areas, which is if we are going through a forest with one line that feeds a railroad crossing, it may be better for us to put a battery and solar on the railroad crossing and not, and take that risk out. So we're looking at a whole lot of those. We're looking at where would be the best place to reduce that risk across our service territory, not just here in Sonoma. And it is more of a personal decision by a homeowner or someone that wants to have security within an outage. Matt, anything?
No, I would just reinforce, there's no one silver bullet for the whole system or for the whole county, right? I mean, there are a myriad of solutions, and we need to combine them, you know, at our level across the grid and then in individual communities and environments. So there's no one solution. It's a team of solutions and all of us pulling in the same direction to reduce the wildfire risk and then reduce the impact of outages as well.
Does PGE have grant programs for the community who would wish to install battery backup or solar panels or schools? Should they put in generators?
So a couple of things I want to mention to you. One of the things we're always concerned about is making sure that our most vulnerable customers have resources. And there's a couple of ways we do that. We make sure that people who have, who want to can get on our medical baseline rate that would allow them for a lower rate, but it also gives them visibility within our PSPS outage as we're looking at those. And in the past, one of the things right now is, in the past, you've had to have a doctor sign off on the medical baseline. Right now, it is self-certified, so you just fill out the application, send it in, and you're, you become a part of the medical baseline that we see when we work with our most vulnerable customers. The other one, I would say, along that same line, is we, our partnership that I talked about with batteries and with giving hotel rooms and things. In Sonoma County, we use the Disability Services Legal Center here in Sonoma County. And in Santa Rosa, we encourage folks who have specific needs, have low incomes, need disability needs, to contact that organization. They can apply for a battery backup. They can apply for things that may help them weather those PSPS events a little better. And so, the other large one we've invested with the CPUC is our self-generated incentive program. And that has a battery component to it. And one of the qualifications for that program is, and it can pay up to 100% of a battery, one of the qualifications for that is that you needed to experience a PSPS, or at least a couple of PSPSs. You've needed to be impacted by that to qualify for that. And I think the last one I heard was, there's about a couple hundred million dollars for that program, and that can pay up to 100%. They look at things like, do you need battery backup for that water pump? Does that help you? Can we help defer the cost of those things? So we're looking at ways in which we can help customers that are impacted by that in collaboration with the CPUC and in collaboration with a lot of our partners we have out there in the battery world. That self-generated incentive program can be applied even to a lot of folks across the spectrum.
Angie or Mate, do you have any questions that you want to ask PGE or Chris Godling?
I do. So I'm very concerned about the springs in our Spanish-speaking community. And you just gave a wealth of information that's important and not only, it's important to our community. So how is that outreach happening? How can we get that information out to people? How is it in bite-sized chunks that we can, you know, make it really accessible for folks?
We can, first off, we can definitely work with you on that. We've put our information out in 13 different languages. So we're trying to do that outreach to make sure that we're reaching those populations, especially those vulnerable populations on that. So, Matt, do you have any, you want to add to that?
Oh, you got it. The website is really the best place because we have fact sheets, we have materials, again, translated into multiple languages. Joe mentioned 13. So that is a way to get materials that we can download and share with others, email around, whatever are tools. And then we're working through community organizations to share some of that information as well.
Right. It's that personal contact that really makes the difference, that has to happen. Translating things is beautiful. It's a great place to start, but we really need to have that outreach component of this for it to stick. As Kadeen and I were talking once, people trust their neighbors and that's who they're going to listen to. So how do we make sure that people are getting that information? And that it's not just written, that it's verbal and videos and those kinds of things too. I'm, Will, I'm happy to help, and I know Angie would be too, to make sure that people are getting are getting that information.
Yeah, I agree 100% with Mighte. What we're seeing a lot is, a lot of our families that we're serving currently right now are homeless. They are possibly living under bridges or in their car, so if they don't have access to a cell phone or to the internet, and how are they receiving this information? How do they know that there is a cooling, you know, center somewhere nearby? And so I completely agree. I think we need to have, you know, a more in-depth communication plan to get this information out to those vulnerable communities, not just by social media, but is it, is it a poster with information? Is it social distancing outreach? And I'm not even sure like what that would look like, but how are we working with the homeless population? How are we with, with the campesinos? Because those are the ones who are not receiving the information.
I think, I think you've got a great point, and perhaps that's something that we can take away from here and, and work on some things about how do we collaborate that? You know, how, what are, what are the, what are the paths that we're missing? PG&E is an awfully large organization that, and sometimes we miss some of those nuances, especially we're talking of Boys Hot Springs, we're talking of our pockets of poverty, we're talking about folks that, that are really impacted and can feel isolated when they're, when they're going through a PSPS. And so that may be a good place that we could collaborate and find some additional pathways to, to reach them.
Yeah, that would be great, because a lot of the, what I'm hearing is a lot of drive-through things, and not everyone has access to that. So there's just a lot of nuances, as you're saying, that should be, be examined. Eh, y Karina quería que yo le mencione que hay traducción en español.
I want to switch over a little bit real quickly. I saw that Chris Godley, you wrote something on our chat about battery backup for signals and lights and other things. Chris, if you can for us, talk a little bit about other services dependent upon energy that are public services and where we stand with those. So one would be traffic, the other is that we've definitely had experience with cell towers and how, in some cases, I remember during the Kincaid fire, and I don't know, that I was told by a Verizon representative at our, at our local assistance center with Corazon, that really the battery backup for the cell towers was for getting connection, but it wasn't for the data. And that's why there are so many issues when we have a significant event, is because sometimes you'll still see four bars on your phone, but you won't be able to get and send, you receive and send a text or pull up something online. So if you can, cell towers, internet, traffic, and anything else that comes to mind of which are dependent. I think maybe the final one would be, who is considered a, an exempt, maybe not an exempt facility, but I can't remember the right verbiage, but a highlighted facility, like for instance, we don't want to lose power to our jail. You don't want to lose power to other kinds of sheriff's office services, right?
Sure, absolutely. No, great question, sir. When the power goes out, of course, in a modern society, we're seeing impacts across the board. Some immediate, that you can see right away, and some that kind of show up a little bit later, secondaries. And the biggest one, of course, is now communications. We do believe especially our ability to issue warnings, because remember, public safety shut-offs are occurring at the same time as high fire hazards generally. And so we still want to be able to get outward in case a fire does break. And so communications are significantly challenged. As a matter of fact, as a result of the Kincaid fire, the county of Sonoma went to the CPUC, a California Public Utilities Commission, and was able to lobby successfully for the CPUC to order additional performance requirements onto cell phone carriers like Sprint and Verizon, AT&amp;T, such that they're now required to develop and build cell phone towers that will provide 72 hours of service, not just connectivity, but actual service, either via generator or battery. Now, it's not all going to happen at once, but in case they can't develop and produce that 72 hours of performance, they're supposed to notify us and local government as to which cell sites are at risk, which ones are going to fail, so that we can plan around that. So even as recently as our experiences, just a year ago, we have seen some steps taken to improve the ability for folks to stay connected, both for voice and for wireless broadband as well. That's very critical. As it relates to the internet, it's important to note that the providers like Comcast or AT&amp;Tuverse deliver internet service to homes and businesses using PG&E power. And generators, however, will not be able to replace that PG&E power. It'll be able to allow those systems to step in their little command and control nodes. Basically, they can process data, but that last little bit of cable that goes into your house, for example, that needs PG&E power in order to work. And so there are some efforts to increase wireless connectivity when the power's out, but it's not going to happen for a long time for folks to be able to be able to depend on internet at home, should they lose their power in their entire neighborhood. And then finally, as a result, we're also looking at impacts on what we call critical facilities. These are the institutions, the organizations that we really depend on, whether it's a fire station or a 911 call center. And so many of these centers have been able to improve their ability to switch over to emergency power and keep their operations running, as well as, for example, even local government buildings. We've done a little bit of work, but it is a big step ahead over the next 10 and 20 years to truly develop and build resilient infrastructure, new buildings that have the ability to generate power and store power, so that things like power shut-offs, whether it's planned or like today, unplanned, that they can continue to function. So we're hoping that the lessons from the last several years here will come to roost and really allow us to become a more resilient community in the next several years.
And Joe, one of the folks had a question about accessing information about the SGIP program. Do you have that information on the PG&E website?
It is on the PG&E website if you go there, and if you just, as simple as pgne.com backslash SGIP.
And we still have a number, we still have a number of fire rebuild folks out there, so I would assume that they could qualify. Gee, they must be in tier two or tier three.
I think a lot of them are, and I would encourage them to explore it. It could be very beneficial to them, and if they are rebuilding, and this would help make their, make their house or business more resilient to those outages, I would encourage them to explore it.
And I think Sonoma Clean Power and the counties, Sonoma County Energy and Sustainability Division also has information about the SGIP program, and that's the battery backup, the self-generation. So it's all worth exploring, and the energy and sustainability can give you some information about what that is all about. Supervisor Goran, any other questions? We're, we're running close to time, but we have a couple, couple more minutes for some questions.
Well, you know, there's some, what I'd like to ask of our panelists is, if you can click under the Q and A, there's an opportunity for you all to write some responses or some areas for people to get information. And we'll come back to you in a minute if there's any that you want to answer as opposed to Supervisor Goran and I addressing them. But maybe Supervisor Goran, you and I could, while we ask our panelists to take a look at the Q and A and the chat questions, is we can just say, first of all, I want to thank you, my colleague. You and I have, you know, with the block captains, I see a couple of them on this, have walked, and you in your own home, we've walked into fire and walked out of it and walked back into it, and, and now we're in COVID and everything else. I think a few things that I heard that are important is, number one is, just a random one is, expect to hear a lot of helicopters in the future. After there's a public safety power shutdown event, they're going to be using a lot of helicopters to be able to check lines, to try and speed things up and how it moves forward. The other thing I really want to remind everybody is that only call 911 if you are in emergency. Sonoma County has doubled down on building out the capacity for 211, so another three-digit for information. And what that allows the 911 system to do is during these incidents, it allows us to get out to people who have truly life-threatening issues, as opposed to getting a, a switchboard overrun by people who are asking questions when that is really for life and death situations. So 211 is the most important number to call for information. And then also is, is prepare yourself. During the Kincaid fire, I call, I call the difference between the Tubbs Nun, Sonoma Complex, the difference between 2017 and 2019, I call it kind of a tale of two fires, right? Because, because the difference in forecasting and preparedness and the money we had put into up-staffing of firefighters, all of the institutional work, what PG&E had done, others, were all beneficial. But what was the biggest element was evacuating people and people being able to withstand that. In the future, we, as Sonoma County, and I would assume our, our utility partners with PG&E, we're going to be risk averse. We can never put ourselves in a position like 2017 again, where firefighters are not allowed to stop fires because they're evacuating people. So forecasting, alert warnings, you know, getting people clear so that we, we can allow first responders to do that work is going to be a way of doing business. So what does that mean? It means you have to have locations identified. Work with us, connect to the system, but the biggest difference is personal resilience, family-based resilience, which feeds into neighborhood resilience. And so Supervisor Goran, I want to pass it over to you, but I also want to, quiero agradecer a todos nuestros amigos y amigas que están con nosotros y escuchando en español. Nosotros estamos empujando fuerte para no solamente traducir toda esa información, pero crear fuentes donde estos tipos de conversaciones tienen un lugar y una base para, para contactar con la comunidad y un espacio, digamos, verdadero como abierto donde se puede levantar su voz. Entonces habla con nosotros y también con nuestros colegas. Gracias. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, James. I studied Spanish three semesters, but I can't do that. So I'm so glad you can. And Mighte and Angie also. I'm so glad that we have bicultural, bilingual assistance, multilingual with our ASL interpreter. I really want to take the last couple of minutes to thank our panelists, Joe Horak, Mike Pender from PG&E. Want to really thank our interpreters, Geordi and Naomi, thank you so much for being with us. And to our panelists, Chris Godley from Emergency Management, Mighte Aturi from the Springs MAC, and Principal at El Verano School, Angie Sanchez, always a pleasure, Corazon Hillsburg. And please know that we are recording this. It will be, you can access it on the Sonoma County Facebook page, as well as the Soco Emergency Page YouTube. So the information is there. If any of the community members have follow-up questions, you can, please send them to Supervisor Gor or me, and at susan.goran@sonoma-county.org, and we will try to get the answers to your questions. Please know that the supervisors, and Supervisor Goran and I in particular, are really focused on resiliency for the future. Never again do we want our community to experience the fires that erupted on the evening of October 7th and 8th and for the next couple of weeks. PG&E does not want that either. And I can attest to the fact that the helicopters have been busy this, this summer, absolutely. I live close to a transmission line, and every couple of days, there's a helicopter going back and forth. Thank you, Joe, and all of PG&E for the great work that you've been doing on trying to really strengthen the grid system, increase the ability to sectionalize, and to minimize the power disruptions. It is really challenging, all of us working together. We'll have to figure out how we create resiliency for each of our residents in their very specific locations, whether it's an individual house, setting up a place of refuge at a school like El Verano School, looking at multifamily units. Can they, well, quick question, can they install a generator if they live in a fourplex or, or an apartment building? Joe?
Oh, I had myself on mute there, I apologize. It depends on how they're metered, and if they're a master meter, works one meter that feeds everything, or they're individual meter, that would be something that we would have to...
So they can contact you for information, but obviously, we have a lot of, of folks, housing-challenged folks, and they want to be able to have power, especially as we're distance learning now during the age of COVID. Last words, Mighte, Angie, how do, how do folks in those communities access services through you?
So I can be contacted through the Springs MAC. I have an email address, I can put it in the chat. Is the chat visible to the...
I, I think it is, or we can forward it.
All right, I can put that in there. Also, they can, they can, they could, that's the best way to get ahold of me, is through, through email, through the Springs Municipal Advisory Council. Thank you.
And Angie?
Para los que gustan más información en cómo participar en nuestro programa de preparación de desastres, o para recursos, se pueden comunicar con Corazon Hillsburg, nuestro número de teléfono 707 395 0938. También nos pueden mandar un mensaje, un comentario por Facebook o Instagram, y también me pueden mandar un email si gustan a angie@corazonhillsburg.org. And for those listening in English, you can contact Corazon Hillsburg via our phone number 707-395-0938. You can email me at angie@corazonhillsburg.org, or you can always send us a message or comment via our social media on Instagram or Facebook.
Thank you once again, Joe Horak, Chris Godley, Mighte Aturi, Angie Sanchez, and there's Joe Horak's PG&E address, and I bet you Chris, Chris Godley is going to put his email on there now. Oh, say it was so. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I hope that we answered as many of your questions as possible. Please be safe during this extreme heat, extreme weather, and rotating power outages. Again, please note the cooling centers. Be safe in the age of COVID. Be safe always. Thank you, community.